Starting to record. Yeah. Good evening, guests and fellow Toastmasters. A warm welcome to the Gabby's special marathon meeting. I am Karthik Venugopal, your Sergeant at Arms for today. I am sure you are as excited as I am. Let me highlight few very important key points for our meeting. The meeting will be blocked for two and half hours and you are expected to stay for two and half hours. Your video should be on and audio should be off. Audio should be only on when you are called to speak or need to speak. Regarding the topics of sex, religion and politics, even though Toastmasters International does not put any restrictions on speaking on these topics. At Gabby's Club, we request all speakers and role-takers to be mindful and responsible and abstain from expressing any controversial views on these sensitive topics. Also, are you to be cognizant of the fact that we as a club practice diversity and inclusion in letter and in spirit? Hence, ensure there are no sexist, racist or any such undertones which create hostility and discomfort for members or guests. This meeting is being recorded and would be streamed on social media channels. If you don't have your consent for the same, kindly mention it to the Zoom master to pause the recording during your speech. We won't be able to edit the video once it is published on social media platforms. So, today as we have a special marathon, we have our energetic team mod who will take over the session. But today's, but today our Toastmaster of the day is attempting her manage online meetings project. So, read out, so to read out the guidelines of her project she is attempting, let me call upon the evaluator of Toastmaster of the day. That is Toastmaster Neha Jain. I hand over the mic to you, Toastmaster Neha, to read out the project guidelines of Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you, Toastmaster Karthik. Uh, the project objective of my targets P uh of the team mod of today is to facilitate an online meeting. Uh, yeah, so all the very best to uh the team mod for the day.
Thank you, Toastmaster Neha, for reading out the project guidelines. So now let me hand over the stage to Toastmaster of the day Smriti. But if you technically see, as I was speaking two days back, that you cannot hand over the stage because it's against the gravity rules. So now let me change the sentence. I will hand over the mic, but if you practically see, I don't have the mic. So, what is the best sentence? I will give the baton to Toastmaster of the day, Smriti Mohanti. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Karthik. Fellow Toastmasters and dear guests, that was Toastmaster Karthik, our Sergeant at Arms for today's meeting. Can we have a big round of applause for such a passionate and energetic entry viewer? A very good evening to all of you. It's my pleasure to facilitate the Gabby's Speech Marathon today. I would like to welcome and acknowledge the presence of all the guests to our meeting. Dear guests and visiting Toastmasters, we appreciate you joining us today and we are keen to know more about you. So I would request you to please unmute and introduce yourself to us. Do we have any guest today with us? I don't see any guest as of now.
You can call our Gabby's members only to ask them how their evening is going on.
Uh, okay, let's start with Toastmaster Tessie. How your rainy day is going on?
It's as rainy as it could be. As usual, as always, I have butterflies in my tummy due to the speech uh session which I have today and especially because I'm number two. And at the same time, I'm glad that I'll get over by number two. So, I'm excited, I'm challenged, I want to complete my L2 as soon as possible. Thank you, Toastmasters Smriti, and all the best to you.
Thank you. We are equally excited for you. Uh, Toastmaster Ishu, how is your evening going today?
Oh, you can't stand to see me from my frizzy hair. I am absolutely nervous and I would second Toastmaster Tessie. I have got butterflies, elephants, everything jumping inside my stomach. Because when I saw the lineup today, I was nervous and then I became extremely nervous. So all in all, a great evening. I'm happy that I am here, but I can't describe the levels of anxiety that I am going through. So yes, I will be happy to be over after my third, I mean, the third level and third speech. See how nervous I am, I'm fumbling. Over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ishu. To be honest, feeling is mutual here. So, let's sail it together. We have uh Raja Balaji. Are you a guest or Toastmaster, visiting Toastmaster? Uh, Raja Balaji, you there? Okay, no worries. Okay, dear Toastmasters, due to scarcity of time, we won't have an opportunity to have each of you in case any guests join to introduce themselves. But we would be delighted to know you more. I would urge you to use the chat function to share a brief intro of yourself. We will ask you to share your feedback at end of this meeting. For the benefit of guests, I would want to reiterate that Toastmasters is a home to people who wish to face their fear of public speaking. Not only that, if you love to connect and network with others, if you want to hone your leadership skills, Toastmasters is the place for you. It's a safe place to learn, unlearn and relearn. We are proud to carry forward this hundred years old legacy which has spanned over hundred plus countries. For everyone's understanding, let me explain the structure of a Toastmasters meeting. In a regular meeting, we have three sections: Prepared Speech Section, Table Topic Section and Evaluation Section. But today, it's a speech marathon, hence we will have only two sections: The Prepared Speech and the Evaluation Section. Okay, facilitating or managing a marathon is always a tough assignment. So to make our next two and half hour smooth, I have a most reliable and careful helping hand. It's our time offer today. She is a biologist turned into psychologist enthusiast. She is currently pursuing her PGD in Training and Development from ISTD Delhi. Aside of being a student, her keen interest lies in interacting with people, making friends and giving surprises. She has become a Toastmaster since January twenty twenty. Please put your hands together for our timer, Toastmaster Manvi Kumar. Toastmaster Manvi.
Your role? Thank you so much, Toastmasters Smriti. Good evening, fellow Toastmasters and my dear guests. I am the timer of the meeting today and I, as you all know, it is the speech marathon. So I'll be showing the cards according to the agenda and for the normal speeches that is a five to seven minutes, a green card will be shown at five minutes, a yellow card will be shown at six minutes and a red card will be shown at seven minutes. For the evaluators, I'll even time the evaluators today. So for the evaluators, the time limit is two to three minutes. At two minutes, the green card will be shown. At two minute thirty seconds, the yellow card will be shown. And at three minutes, the red card will be shown. I'll present my speak, I'll present my report when the Toastmaster of the day calls upon. Over to you, Toastmasters Smriti.
Thank you, Toastmaster Manvi, for that swift and quick illustration. Let's get started then with our first segment, the Prepared Speech Section. We have powerful and dynamic marathon of nine speeches. Dear Toastmasters and guests, don't consider these speeches as mere usage of words. These are stimulating stories and art of factual and fictional narration. On that note, let me introduce our first speaker. He is based out of Bangalore and works with a human capital consulting firm as director. His aim is to become a motivational speaker and create an impact through power of words. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Amit Ottwani. Toastmaster Amit is attempting his icebreaker speech. The purpose of this speech is for the member to introduce themselves to the club and learn the basic structure of a public speaking. Timer, please note the speech length is four to six minutes. Toastmaster Divashish, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Amit. Toastmaster Amit, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Toastmasters Smriti, for that kind introduction.
Yeah, I'll quickly read out the title. So, Toastmaster Amit, the phoenix, the phoenix, Toastmaster Amit.
Thank you, Smriti, for that introduction. Ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Toastmasters and my dear guests. Uh, let me tell you about a story today. Many, many years ago, there lived a bird called phoenix. Now, according to ancient Greek legend, this bird called phoenix lived for five hundred years at one go. And only one phoenix lived at a particular time. When their time was up, then they would set themselves on fire and then build a nest around them. And from there on, a new phoenix would emerge from the ashes. My life story is quite symbolic of the story of the bird phoenix. Now let me get into my life story. I was born and brought up in a middle-class family in the holy city of Varanasi. Third child to my parents, belonging to a middle-class family and middle-class parents of nineties, the only aim of my parents was to provide a good education, for not just for me but both my siblings as well. Initially, uh it would be tough to, I think, understand, but initially I got into a Hindi medium school, where I was quite average in terms of my studies. Both my brothers were in English medium school, but my parents thought that, okay, let them, let them, you know, let me get into an English medium school and prepare for future. They put me in English medium school. It was quite difficult for me to adjust initially. However, when the, when I actually got into the school, the medium of education was actually in English, right? It became really difficult for me to get into this, the new environment. I struggled in my studies. I had almost just, almost failed my grade four. Then my mom decided to take me to a teacher. Now this teacher, I think, was the finest ever teacher which I have ever encountered in my life. She actually taught me the meaning of studying, which is not just mugging up but learning. She actually helped me unlearn the concept of mugging and making me understand each and everything. Now, as you would understand, my background was a Hindi medium kind of a background. She actually converted each of those statements into Hindi so that I understand things in detail. I think, you know, that was the class. I almost topped the class and I didn't look back after that. So with that kind of a background, I, I think I went on to do well in my studies later on and I got into one of the top universities of Delhi University. I started physics, I started physics honors there and I knew that from somewhere in the start, I knew that I don't want to pursue science in my further studies. But I want to pursue management. In my third year, I decided that I want to go for an MBA. So I started studying for CAT. One of my best friends at that point of time, he was also quite keen on physics but not keen on management. So I mentioned to him that why don't we study together? We should, we would apply for, for CAT. Though he started studying with all his hard work and dedication, while I was studying only from a perspective of appearing for these exams. Now, at the end of these exams, he went on to crack I M N D B where I was completely down the dumps, not even able to secure a call from a good B school. I decided I need to change this. I, then I actually, you know, followed my path of hard work and dedication which I learnt in my first story. I put in enormous number of hours to make sure all my tests, my mock, mock aptitude tests, I think, you know, are going well. I think for one year, I put myself into ashes and then I was able to crack CAT finally and I cracked MDI Goodgu. That story actually taught me the entire perspective of resilience in times of failure. My third story today is about post what happens at, after, you know, an MBA placement. Now, I'm just, you know, if you look at my story coming from a middle-class background uh and upbringing in a tower, tier-three kind of a town, didn't help me, you know, develop a good personality. Some of our pronunciations were still not that great. Now, that was something which, you know, I realized, you know, during the empty number of interviews which I appeared for, placement discussions which I appeared for, that was one of the things which was lacking in me. Somehow, I think, you know, I, I was able to secure, uh, you know, I would say a below-average placement uh during my MBA days. But after that, somehow, I think, you know, God was kind to me. I got into a good consulting firm and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm there as, you know, what I am right now. However, this one thing which is always kind of haunted me, which is the fear of public speaking. And I was listening to, you know, some of my fellow Toastmasters, I think, you know, all of us have those, that fear. But this, this fear has kind of dragged on for quite a long time. And if you not believe, but you know, sometimes presentations are okay. But in terms of public speaking, whenever I see large gatherings and audiences, I just feel like, you know, going, just running away from that room. My amygdala gets just over me, just hijacks me and my feet just kind of freezes. My hands start perspiring. I just want to run away from that situation. I think that's something now, I think with my third story, I want to change as I go forward in my Toastmasters journey. I want to stand confident in as big a crowd as possible and with, and with the power of words, I want to realize, I want to become, uh, I want to become a motivational speaker and a coach. As Kenan Hart says in her speech, she rose from the fl, from the ashes. She was the phoenix, one who could do well and rise the source of the sun. Thank you and back to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you, Toastmaster Amit. Uh, as Toastmaster Amit attempted his icebreaker speech, so I would request everyone to give a standing ovation for his delivery.
Thank you.
Toastmaster Amit, if I may say, the story was so inspiring and at the same time so relatable. I was just trying to pick the instances of your life. The early adolescence, then the teenage, everything, we have these phases to be honest and uh rightly portrayed the role of a mother. And sometimes we decided, undecided lot of things in our life throughout the journey and how you ended with the phobia, if I may say, with all of us have the public speaking and all of us are here together. More power to you for this step which you have taken. Uh, good luck for your future endeavors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Smriti. Thank you.
Moving forward with our second speaker. She is a fellow in Strategic Learning and Development and OD Intervention. She comes with overall sixteen years of experience in the field of talent development and facilitating behavioral programs. She has diverse experience in banking, insurance and financial services. Please put your hands together to welcome Toastmaster Tessie Joy Philip. Toastmaster Tessie is attempting Level Two Path One, Understanding Your Leadership Style From the Path Effective Coaching. The purpose of this project is for the member to identify his or her primary leadership style or styles. The purpose of the speech is for the member to share some aspect of his or her primary leadership style or discuss leadership styles in general. Timer, please note the speech length is five to seven minutes. Best of Mr. Toastmaster Nancy, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Tessie today. Toastmaster Tessie, discovering my leadership style, discovering my leadership style, Toastmaster Tessie.
Good evening, Toastmasters and my fellow guests. I believe in benevolent dictatorship, provided I am the dictator. Now, this is a quote from a famous business tycoon, Sir Richard Branson, founder of Virgin Group. Today, I am here to share my story of self-discovery and growth. One had allowed me to identify my unique leadership style as a facilitator. It's a journey that has not only shaped me but has transformed me the way I approach leadership and facilitation. Like many of us, I embarked on this journey as a facilitator with a desire to create positive impact, to bring people together. However, I soon realized that effective facilitation requires more than just good intentions. It demands a deeper understanding of one's leadership styles and the ability to adapt to its various situations. How did I do all this? I began my journey by reflecting on my experiences and seeking feedback from those I had worked with. I identified three key components that formed the foundation of my leadership style: empathy, adaptability and a commitment to continuous improvement. Firstly, empathy became a cornerstone of my leadership style. As a facilitator, I recognized the importance of understanding the emotions, the needs, the perspectives of individuals and the groups I was working with. I realized that by genuinely empathizing with their concerns and aspirations, I could build trust and thereby creating a safe space for open and honest discussion. Now you would say, all right, why don't you help us with some example from your story? Of course, hear me out. Let me share one of the examples of how empathy played a crucial role in my facilitation. Some time ago, I was leading a team building workshop for a group of professionals from diverse backgrounds. One participant in particular, Pia, she was reserved, hesitant to participate. Instead of pushing her to engage, I took a moment and had a one-on-one conversation with her. I discovered that she had a fear for public speaking due to her past experiences. By empathizing with her, my dear friends, and adjusting the workshop activities to help her accommodate her comfort level, Pia, can you imagine? Gradually opened up, contributing positively to the group's dynamics. Now what happened here? The experience reinforced my belief in the power of empathy as a facilitator. Now, my dear friends, do you agree to this point? How many of you feel that empathy is one of the core competencies of leadership styles? May I request any one of us to please share your thoughts here? Anyone? Do you find the topic very difficult to answer? Do you believe empathy plays a very important role?
Yeah, may I?
Yes, Toastmaster Tessie, it surely does. I think one, it's one of the key elements in leadership.
Wonderful. Would that be Neha?
That was Lakshmi.
Lakshmi, thank you for joining me today to hear me out. It's a great motivation. Thank you for this. Do we have any other speaker who would like to share their thoughts?
Yeah, I believe that empathy is one of the cornerstones of leadership. If you cannot understand what your team is going through, then I don't think you are fit to lead. You cannot always lead with an iron hand. Thank you.
Oh my god, thank you so much. You stole away all my points. Thank you. All right, well done. Thank you for sharing and supporting me today. Now, secondly, my second important aspect was the adaptability. That also became an integral aspect of my leadership style. I realized that no two groups or individuals are the same. Therefore, one-size-fits-all approach to facilitation would not work. Being adaptable allowed me to tailor my facilitation. In the interest of the time, let me give you a quick example. I was facilitating another strategic planning session for a nonprofit organization. They were also from diverse background and suddenly tensions arose during the discussions. Now recognizing the need to adapt, I quickly shifted from a structured agenda to a more flexible and collaborative approach. This change really helped me out and also the group to engage in constructive debate, leading to a more cohesive and actionable plan. Well, what do I say about the commitment to continuous improvement? The whole reason why I joined Toastmasters is to ensure that I actively sought opportunities to enhance my facilitation skills. Overall, let me tell you, self-discovering my leadership skills helped me create transformative facilities experience and fostering a great opportunity to interact with all my participants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Toastmaster Tessie. Can we have a huge round of applause for her performance today? Toastmaster Tessie, I felt personally your journey of the growth and development which you spoke about, the three important pillars, if I may put it that way, empathy, then the adaptability and the commitment to improve oneself, actually will be the take of the day for me and definitely, though we practice, but we'll make sure to remember this always whenever we there in a position of ownership or leadership. Thank you so much. Okay then, let the dice get rolling with the third speaker today. She is from Prajagraj Toastmaster Club. She's a teacher, presently a full-time mom to a super active five-year-old kid. She says, joining Toastmaster is a part of the journey to figure out herself. Please put your hands together to welcome Toastmaster Ishu Shukla. Toastmaster Ishu is attempting Level Two Project One, Understanding Your Leadership Style From the Path Persuasive Influence. The purpose of this project is for the member to identify his or her primary leadership style or styles. The purpose of the speech is for the member to share some aspect of his or her primary leadership style or discuss leadership style in general. Timer, please note the speech length is five to seven minutes again. Toastmaster Lakshmi, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Ishu today. Toastmaster Ishu, not so obvious, not so obvious, Toastmaster Ishu.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the day. Confused, confounded and rattled. This is how I have been for the past few days. Because as soon as I was handed over the report that you have these traits of leadership styles, now go ahead and tell the world about them. I had no idea how to process this information. However, as all great leaders do in their time, I embrace the power of the notepad and started scribbling my points on it, better organized and I can follow up on the thoughts later on. I decided to channel Deetaji Subhashandri Bose, Mahatma Gandhi, Steve Jobs and even at times Captain America. Believe me, he is handsome. So as these energies flowed through my mind, through my fingers and onto the paper, ping-ling, eleven thirty, time to pick up my son from school. So I put down the notepad, drove my car, rushed to the school and approached this class. And as I approached this class, this teacher thundered at me, just like Thor. Mrs. Shukla, your son was not paying attention in the class today. In fact, he was shouting and disturbing the entire class. You should counsel him. Alright, but why are you shouting at me? My anger levels were increasing. Now, as soon as I saw my son come out of the class visibly upset and agitated, my anger levels flatlined. And even though I wanted to scold him, somehow at the back of my head, I could feel the soft voice of Sudha Murthy. And she was whispering to me, great leaders rule with affection, not with power. This is when I donned my altruistic robe, tried to empathize with my son and put myself in his shoes. While on the way back, we decided to have a on-the-spot meeting, very important family meeting. Vedant, why were you shouting in class? Is everything alright? I was shouting because I was shouting. Alright, you were shouting, but why were you shouting? I told you I was shouting. Now a conversation with my five-year-old is like running around in circles. It's like running around in loops. It may or may not reach an end. So I tried all sorts of approaches, cajoling, convincing, even promising him different toys. And this is when the poor chap admitted. There was a boy in the class. He was hitting me and pushing me and did not say anything to him, but she was only scolding me. This is why I shouted. Um, alright, calm down. Everything will be alright. From the next time, if you have a problem, you take it to the teacher. By shouting, you are disturbing the entire class. Understood? Understood. By the time we reached home, he was already making plans for the next thing that he had to play with. Now, I believe all of you can understand that as soon as a small boy, all of five years reaches home, all he can think about is play, play, play. To get that dreaded homework done is like climbing Mount Everest. It's a gargantuan, impossible task. So this is when I decided to put the altruistic role aside and put my democratic hat on. So with carrot or with new toys or with cars, I decided to get the work done. Come on, my love, we have to complete our homework. But he did not budge. Democracy aside, assertive mom reporting. Now this is when I told him, now you have to go to your room and your mother, listen to me. He did not budge again. Alright, authoritative, assertive dictator in, go to your room or all your toys are gone for the day. This worked like a charm and all the homework was finished within no time. Come evening, it was snack time. He wanted to have waffles and he himself took out the mix, the mixture. He poured the milk, he broke the egg, started whipping everything and he poured it into the waffle maker. I, trying not to be a helicopter parent, just a coach was there to guide him through the journey. I did not want to interrupt him. And as we waited for the waffles to cook, I had a sudden epiphany, a sudden realization. And this realization was, why do we think of leaders always as somebody who dons a corporate suit and somebody who's fighting battles in the boardroom, heading multimillion-dollar companies? Why did I begin my speech with references to Mahatma Gandhi or Steve Jobs? Are these the only leaders around? Because it was an obvious choice, my dear fellow Toastmasters, an obvious choice. As parents, we are in a position to be the leaders we want our children to be, to develop integrity in them, to have them, to build confidence in them and to convert them into great leaders of tomorrow. As a mother, when I joined Toastmasters, it was my idea of setting up an example for my son that I can manage a household, I can manage you, and I can manage Toastmasters as well. J.C. Maxwell said, that leadership is not just about flowcharts, titles, or positions. It is about one life influencing the other. So in a not-so-obvious fashion, I choose to impart a positive change on the leader of tomorrow, that is my son. And I do not want to box myself into a particular leadership style. It will be like a box of chocolates. I'll pick one and choose one and impart and implement the same as the need arises. The idea is to effect a positive change. Over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Can we have a huge round of applause for Toastmaster Ishu? What a relatable interview with leadership with a box of chocolates. And yeah, who said leaders are supposed to be the names which you have heard? Leaders are the parents actually, learning the leadership style from a five-year-old kid. Wow. And the thing which I liked the most is the role of Captain America and Thor in your entire speech. I loved it. Thank you so much for your speech. On that note, here comes our fourth speaker. She's a certified image consultant and soft skills trainer by profession. Her interest in public speaking and leadership skills made her join Toastmasters. She's double triple crown winner and double path breaker. She is also the founder of Imaginatic Image Consulting Services. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the day, Sriti, for a lovely introduction. Let me start, I'll start.
Uh, Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi, just let me read out the purpose first.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No worries. Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi is attempting Level 2 Project 2, Understanding Your Communication Style From the Path Visionary Communication. The purpose of this project is for the member to learn about different communication style and identify his or her own primary style. The purpose of the speech is for the member to share the impact of his or her style on others. Timer please note, the speech length is five to seven minutes. Toastmaster Jyoti, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi today. Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi, rediscovering myself. Rediscovering myself, Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi.
Thank you, Toastmasters Sriti, for a lovely introduction. Today I will be sharing with your story of an under-confident kid who transformed herself into a confident young woman. As a kid, I was very, very underconfident. I couldn't speak up for myself. I couldn't say what I want, what I want to do, what I am feeling. If I was sick also, I couldn't express I was sick. That kind of underconfidence, I couldn't understand myself, that kind of underconfident kid I was. Even while growing up, also these things happening with me, even in high school days. Other than studies, I am not underconfident in everything. It started growing, while growing up also, even under confidence level, going down, self-esteem started dipping up, dipping down, dipping down, dipping down. Because of low self-esteem, I was forced to take wrong decisions. And I suffered a lot, I suffered a lot, I faced many ups and downs. And anyhow, I overcame it. But things started changing when I joined ICBA in twenty seventeen. When I joined ICBA in twenty seventeen for image consulting and soft skills course, after joining image consulting, I truly started, myself esteem started increasing. Within myself, self-esteem is improving slowly, slowly, slowly. I started, even I started realizing gradually and becoming better person, better version of myself. It reflected, even started reflecting in my face also. After that, I completed my, completed my both courses. I am certified also, image consulting and soft skills. But I am certified in both the course, but I am lacking in communication skills, speaking skills. I am very, very classic for during those time. But it changed in September twenty twenty. I joined Gabist Toastmaster Club, newly launched, we all launched Gabist Toastmaster Club. In Gabist Toastmaster Club, I learned the art of public speaking. I became a better speaker, better person, better human being. I even became more patient person also. That is what I learned from Toastmaster, that is what Gabist gave me. Then after completing two paths in Toastmasters, while doing Toastmaster assessment on communication style, it showed me that I have two primary leadership styles. First is direct and second is initiative. Yes, I am a direct communicator. I, I speak from the heart. I am always straightforward person. Many times, many people say, you shouldn't be so straightforward. But I am, but I will speak to person in a way that it shouldn't get hurt, but I tell them. I speak them in a, in a calm way. That is what direct communication helped me. And few days back, I want to share my personal experience. Where I go for training, they, sometimes they delay in my payment. I call them and told, sir, you didn't pay me. I am working for you. At least I need travel expense. Please give me. If I'm, I don't have money for my travel, if you give me, then I can travel and train your students. That I am able to ask with them only because of my direct communication style. If I was before twenty-year-old, she left me, definitely I would not ask, I would, I would not to ask money and I would have kept quiet. But because of my direct communication style, I, I communicate directly, I asked him, I need my money to travel for training. And I am, and because of my direct communication style, my confidence level increased. I become a better speaker. And whenever I go for training, my direct communication helped me a lot while training for students. And as a professional, profession, I am a trainer. And another major company along with direct, you know, another major communication skill was my initiating communication style. Yes, I am an initiating communicator and I am very much people person. I love to be with people. I love to hang out with people. I love to be around people. I don't, I don't like to be alone. I am a very enthusiastic person. Because of my initiative communication style, I have made lot of friends in ICBA and in Toastmasters also. Most of my friends are here, whether it's Nancy, Saurav, Lakshmi. And in the Toastmaster also, I made many friends. Yeah, whether it's Karthik, Karthik is there. These people, because I am able to make friendship with them only because of my initiative communicating style. I mean, I, I speak to them freely if I want to, if I have any doubt, if I don't know anything, I will definitely, I will go to them and ask them. I'll tell them straight. I don't know, you can please help me. And because of my initiating communication style, it helped me in professional life also in my networking skills. As an initiating communicator, wherever I go train, I market myself in front of them. Ma'am, I have these services. I train on corporate training. Other than, other than, the first, I train on personal development. I train, I train for students. If you need any services, please let me know. I can train your students. I am able to market myself because of my initiative communicating style. Today I want to thank my direct communication style. It made me a confident person. It made, add another communication style is initiative communicating style. Because it helped me to market myself, it helped me to be, make, helped me to make more friends in my life. I want to thank these two communication style for making me a better person, better human being today. And I want to thank Toastmaster platform for making me realize what kind, what kind made me a person today. Thank you, Toastmasters. Over to Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Shri Lakshmi. Congratulations for this entire transformation to such a wonderful woman in front of us. I congratulate you for all the initiatives you have taken. And to be honest, the, uh, the moment we accept and we admire that, okay, this is our style, that's when the entire journey starts. And kudos to you for that particular initiative. Congratulations once again. Okay, so next we have lined up with our next speaker. He's a chartered accountant by profession. He likes playing cricket, chess, and loves traveling. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Sanjay Jain. Toastmaster Sanjay is attempting Level 3 Project 1, Planning and Implementing From the Path Leadership Development. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice developing a plan and bringing that plan to fruition. The purpose of the speech is for the member to share some aspect of planning and implementing his or her small-scale project. Timer please note, the speech length is five to seven minutes. Toastmaster Devyani, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Sanjay. Toastmaster Devyani, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Thank you. Toastmaster Sanjay, a journey to a remarkable event. A journey to a remarkable event, Toastmaster Sanjay.
Uh, thank you, TMOD, for a wonderful introduction. Uh, good evening, Toastmasters and dear guests. Today, I, I, I am, I want to talk to you about something that can make all the difference in the success of any endeavor. Met, meticulous planning and seamless execution. To list at this point, I will take you through a recent experience that truly demonstrated the success of these two elements, crucial planning and execution. It all began with the installation ceremony of newly elected SCOM members. This event held great importance for our club and I was fortunate enough to be the part of the team responsible for making it a remarkable success. What I want to share with you today is how we transformed a simple idea into a memorable event through a careful planning and perfect execution. Our journey commenced when the SCOM members gathered at our club to kickstart the planning process. At this point, we had the basic concept of what we wanted to achieve. But we knew that turning this vision into reality would require diligent planning and precise execution. We needed to consider every detail, anticipate challenges and ensure that every aspect of the event was well thought out. One of the initial decision was to find out the installation ceremony where it is going to be located. We thought of locating it in our club only or to upscale it into a venue like a hotel. The natural inclination was to choose a cost-effective option of using our club facility as it would allow us to allocate more resources towards club improvement. However, as we explored deeper into the logistics, it became clear that the club might not provide idle ambivalence if the weather condition was unfavorable. Considering we decided to explore more venues, this is where the importance of diverse and collaborative team came to play. Toastmaster Mita, a valuable member of our team, suggested considering Gandhi Bhavan, a conveniently located event hall nearby. This suggestion prompted a virtual meeting during which we engaged in a thoughtful discussion about the pros and cons of this event. After careful consideration and comprehensive evaluation, we reached a decision to book Gandhi Bhavan for our event. It meant our this initial decision marked a crucial turning point in our planning process as it provided the foundation upon which we could build the rest of our event. With the venue secured, we embarked on the complex task of crafting a comprehensive plan. This plan was nothing in uh, we, we had to consider and address a multitude of, of selections. Then we, uh, we decided that, uh, we will, uh, do what, what things like a keynote speaker, uh, keynote speaker. Then, uh, then, uh, keynote speaker, area, 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 area director for making the installation ceremony. Uh, then menu, menu for breakfast and lunch. Uh, all this we noted down in a, in a very well organized Google sheet and allocated that to the each member, uh, to take the responsibility. Uh, so that each person can perform, each team member can perform the activity properly. We allocated the budget for each activity in a, in a very well-mannered planned manner. Uh, then on the event day, uh, we, we, we assembled at two hours earlier, uh, to the event place. It was a Gandhi Bhavan near the Kumar Parak, Kumar Parak. We, we assembled there, all the members gathered there and we, we, we we gathered there. Then the event started. Uh, event started, the key, we, we welcomed the keynote speaker and the area director. Uh, I was allotted the task of the, inviting the guest and, and seeing, noting down the guest's attendance and welcoming them to the event, uh, I, uh, which was very well executed at that point of time. And then when the event started, we all SCOM members were asked to come on the stage and introduce ourselves and what we are going to do for the club in the next six months' time. We, we demonstrated that all the things in a proper manner. We, we demonstrated that all the things in a proper manner, uh and. Uh the, uh the event got uh, as per the plan, we, we executed the event as per the plan. And everything went as per the plan, uh and the execution was seamlessly executed all. We were able to execute it seamlessly. Uh this event was featured on the local TV channel also as it was, it was, uh. Was uh very well and even the um, uh even it was appreciated on the social media platform and things like that. Here, uh the thing is that, uh uh here the thing is that the great learning is that planning and executing the event. Uh makes all the difference, uh with this I conclude my speech, thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Sanjay for taking us through your journey, your ride. How an idea transformed into a remarkable event. Yes, it was full of opportunity and challenges, but you had the planning and execution in place. Which resulted to a successful outcome, so congratulations for the same, please give him a huge round of applause. Okay, so dear Toastmasters and guests, please keep your josh high because we have, we have lined up. Similar stellar speakers down the line, so. All pumped up and expecting the same enthusiasm for, from everyone here. Moving forward, it's time for our sixth speaker. She is an MBA, works as a management consultant at Accenture Strategy. She is a bibliophile, a gardening enthusiast, a fitness freak and a baker. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Monica Ashwini.
Thank you Toastmasters, I hope you can hear me well.
Uh I can hear you Monica, I'm just reading out the purpose for you. Toastmaster Monica is attempting level four project to elective public relations strategies from the path presentation mastery. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice the skills needed to effectively use public relation strategies. For any group or situation. The purpose of the speech is for the member to share some aspect of his or her public relation strategy. Timer please note, the speech length is five to six minutes. Toastmaster John will be evaluating Toastmaster Monica, uh Toastmaster John, are you there? You can uh. Thank you. Toastmaster Monica. A hustler and a learner. A hustler and a learner, Toastmaster Monica.
Thank you Toastmasters, Smriti. The single greatest people skill is a highly developed and an authentic interest in the other person. It is said that that is the key to building a strong P R skill. Good evening everyone, I am Monica Ashwini and I am here to take you through one of my P R strategies that I built. In my last Toastmaster Club, the Gurgaon Orators Toastmasters Club. Has anyone over here been through the recent newsletter of the Gabby's Club? May I see a show of hands please? The Uban two six point oh, has anyone been through that newsletter? And can quote any article that you like, I see T M Nancy raising a hand. T M Nancy, I, I can't hear you, can you please quote an article that you really like?
Uh when there are so many articles in the, in the newsletter, I would say I have also written one, so that's the one now I would like to quote.
Thank you, thank you, and I would like to share my experience also, I really like vows and goes by T M Tessie. So thank you for sharing that. So I assume that most of you over here have been through that newsletter, good job. Every organization has a story to tell. And public relations strategy is that door that opens up to showcase the culture and the vision of that particular club. The newsletter is one of the ways where we can display our culture, our achievements, our aspirations in the best way possible. This is why I aspired to build a P R strategy at my last T M club, the Gurgaon Orators Toastmasters Club. It all started in November twenty twenty one, when the D T M at my club asked me to join the subcommittee. Saying that it would be a fun experience and suggested that it would be just like a swim in the pool. Little did I know that this swim in the pool is not a normal pool. Instead, it was a pool filled with sharks. And even for a swimmer like me, it's gonna be a tedious task to perform. At first, I was asked to share the load with my co-editor Vinod. I thought, how hard it's gonna be? I would just nitpick people's writing skills, spelling skills and even sometimes awaken the grammar Nazi in me. Unbeknownst to me, my editor decides to leave the next day and bestow the entire responsibility on me. Trying not to get overwhelmed by it, I decided to take it one day at a time. However, gradually, I realized that this swim in the pool is not only filled with sharks. Instead, it is filled with hurdles, nothing but the deadly piranhas. As I started to work on the newsletter, I realized that this job entails talking to people, understanding them. And then reviewing each of the articles. I started speaking to all of them, one after the other. I'm a person who gets really anxious when my work gets a bit tardy, that's the negative side of me. The deadline to submit the articles was December thirty first, but some people just really didn't get that. There was one person who sent the article on the twenty ninth of December. But had the courage to make amendments in my already edited article post thirty first, cut. The fact that the person was so chill about it, the fact that the person was so chill about it. Without caring about my time, got me really going. The entire process tested me on different aspects. For example, I saw such good Toastmasters ace their writing skills. On the other hand, I was on the verge of being kicked in my teeth. And I thought to myself, is this what I must edit, is this what I'm here for? Although I do appreciate them taking out their precious time to share their articles with me. I realized that this process is actually helping me grow, learn and relearn. I decided to go deeper into it and act with full zeal. Later, I realized that this job is full of varied experiences and has a motley of experiences. I decided that I should focus on the good and not on the differences. There were instances when someone was trying to contact me in between my meetings, asking me for a piece of writing at the last minute. And the biggest of all, when all members seen zoned my messages on WhatsApp. This would bring in a lot of patience in me and manage my control levels. Throughout this journey, I would say I realized that it's the team that helped me sail through. And that team, we used to call them the famous five. The famous five brought in spectacular creativity, amazing design skills. Contributed by my never ending what the hell wombs. All this blended in together and resulted in something really beautiful. I learned that creating a P R strategy, a public relation strategy involves planning, execution. And at least strategizing a set of actions to build and maintain your brand, your brand image. For your organization or a club, for example. Now I kept four pointers in mind to build a good P R strategy. Number one, I would go ahead with number one, set clear objectives and understand your audience. You need to increase your brand awareness, improve reputation and launch a newsletter in our case, an attractive newsletter in our case. Second, conduct a situation analysis and develop key messages. Thirdly, select your P R channels, it can be social media, it can be blogs, it can be interviews, it can be some kind of event and whatnot. And fourthly, create a content plan and review and monitor, that's the best. Because based on your feedback, one will be able to improve. This is my learning throughout my P R strategy developing journey. In the end, it is said that people don't cross our paths without any reason. A few of them fade as memories and few become a part of who you are as a person. Who you are as a personality, so truly, I am because of who you all are, thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Monica. Every person or organization has a story to tell and it's the P R responsibility to make it visible in life. Thank you so much for taking us through your roller coaster ride, which was full of challenges. But you challenged yourself by having a lot of control and patience through the journey. Thank you so much for narrating that story to us, can we have a huge round of applause for Toastmaster Monica? Here comes our seventh speaker. He is the founder and managing director of a construction management consulting firm. With over thirty five plus years of experience in project management, he is also a professor of practice. At several engineering colleges, teaching, training and coaching emerging engineers. Please join me to welcome distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh Ramamurthy. Is attempting level four project one, leading in difficult situation from the path persuasive influence. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice strategies for adjusting to unexpected changes to a finalized plan. Timer please note, the speech length is ten to seventeen minutes. Five to seven minutes for the prepared speech and five to ten minutes for impromptu responses. Distinguished Toastmasters Saurav, you will be evaluating distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh here, distinguished Toastmasters Saurav, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there, I'm there.
Thank you for the confirmation. Distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh, the third step. The third step, distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh.
Thank you, good evening, audio check, am I audible? An American millionaire was once asked, what is the secret of his success? He had replied, right decisions. And as a follow up question, he was asked, what is the secret of your right decisions? What do you think was his responses? Anyone? Any guess?
Right planning.
Okay, anyone else?
Being mindful.
Okay, one more chance with somebody else.
Mistakes we made.
Very close, his response was wronged people. How many of you dare to make mistakes and learn from them? Extensive research and experimentation by Dr. Merwin. And Dr. Lee nineteen ninety eight at University of Michigan showed that ninety eight. Ninety nine point eight percent of people are scared to learn from their own mistakes. Then, is it wise choice to learn from others? Look at all of you here, aren't we here actively listening to speakers? And then later, they are listening to their evaluators to benefit and overcome challenges. Toastmasters, everyone frequently encounters challenges. Common hurdles, financial difficulties, health issues, relationship conflicts. Career setbacks. These challenges test our resilience, problem solving abilities. And most importantly, adaptability. For public speaking, we have Toastmasters, we come here, practice, learn from our evaluators and others and we go back. But for real world challenges in life and profession, where do we learn to overcome hurdles, challenges and issues? You all will agree that biggest training or learning from uh is from experiences. From others. Who offer valuable insights, they offer alternative perspectives, many of them share proven strategies. And these empower individual to make great decisions, sometimes informed decisions. Avoid common pitfalls, navigate through challenges more effectively, I would say. Leveraging the collective wisdom is the smartest and efficient way to overcome obstacles. And achieve success. Embracing the wisdom of others and accepting it, adapting to their lessons. To your unique situations. While you make that informed decision is more efficient. And is the time tested way of overcoming all challenges. While I say all these, let me show you the other side of the coin. How does these sharings happen? There are various ways experienced professionals share their experiences. Training sessions, workshop, conference, seminars. Where there are a lot of storytelling and case studies are shared, I am sure many of you have attended several of these. And some of you would have definitely gone for some mentoring or coaching sessions. There are lot of podcasts, webinars and reels available on these, lot of people share there. There are informal settings where people share experiences and their challenges and how they came out of it. There are peer reviews and feedbacks. Participating in online forums and communities, now there are so many WhatsApp groups where these things are shared. As a first step to sharing my project management experiences was through training. Where I imparted knowledge, then with mentoring where I imparted guidance. Then I moved on to coaching where I provided tailored support. Secondly, I moved to guests and keynote speaking in my work area. I went into portals of several engineering colleges, giving guest lectures to emerging engineers. And I have gone to lot of corporates, training experienced professionals. I accepted invitations to speak as guests in large universities. In workshops, in conventions, in construction events where I have shared my experiences with students. Early career professionals, industry peers. I started sharing the experiences I shared from the dias in form of blogs. Here and there, I'm not so successful there because I was not consistent. Now, the third step is what I am going to take and talk about. The first part of the third step is seriously working on those blogs where I was not consistent. Many of you have witnessed the panel discussion that I moderated recently. And you heard D T M Mohammed Sukri mentioning one important thing. You go on winning ribbons, pins, titles and you feel good about it in Toastmasters Club. Unless somebody knocks on your head and asks you, hey, do you remember, why did you join Toastmasters? Those words that day has given lot of thrust under my wings. Looking back, I joined Toastmasters for two reasons, association. And learning to articulate my experiences well, share them with others. The first one is going on and it will continue to go on as an ongoing effort. And now I'm starting the second one full fledged. Public speaking skill that is nurtured now at Toastmasters. Public speaking skill that is nurtured now at Toastmasters. Has made me adept with connecting with people and captivating audiences to some extent. There's a long way to go, but still I feel there's something to start now. I want to test these skills outside while I transfer these skills into through podcasting. Where my ability to speak clearly, concisely and engagingly can attract and retain listeners. Project management often involves presenting complex information clearly and compellingly. I strongly feel my experience in storytelling, which I have practiced in three years in Toastmasters. And to some extent haunted here. And it is an invaluable craft which can give great narratives. In my post podcast episodes that I am going to broadcast and will benefit many. Having worked with hundreds of project management, project managers across the continents in construction. I know, I know for the fact there are no formal platform for exchanging ideas, best practices and successes. There is severe dearth or a need for a channel for communicating success and failure. This digital era has made podcasts a predominant form of communication. People are increasingly turning to podcasts for education, entertainment and inspiration. I am sure many of you. Are attuned to it or maybe habituated to it. And this is the right time, I think, for me to start that. Just as I have grown and evolved in my project management career and in Toastmasters. Podcasting will present me with opportunities for continuous professional and personal growth. I will continue learning new content creation skills and audience engagement. Lastly, by sharing project management experiences in. Public experiences and public speaking skills through a podcast, I can make a lasting impact on my audience. Maybe leaving a legacy of knowledge and inspiration. Now, I want to share how this is going to work out. I hope to create an informative, engaging and empathetic. Podcast experience through weekly podcasts of what I call Ace the Code. My project management experience along with several people in my network. And my public speaking skills will allow me to connect with my listeners more deeply. Giving them insights and guidance that can impact their personal and professional lives. Plan to launch it early December twenty twenty-three. The Saturday releases of Ace the Code will help share success stories with those ninety-nine point eight percent of people. Who are scared to learn from their own mistakes. Plan to start solo for about twenty minutes of episode. I'll also look at co-hosting with somebody. I'll also have interview-based episodes of not more than forty minutes. There will be a panel show, some Q and A sessions also. And as I progress, someday I'll do a live podcast. My podcast will combine styles like interview, interviewing and conversational. Narratives and monologue, especially when I go solo, storytelling and some of the scripted versions of it. And when I do a panel show or a Q and A, there will be roundtables. I plan to bring those who have successfully worked in their challenges. Those who are in depth of challenges, maybe in their trenches and looking for a helping hand. And also those who have seen it through somebody else's lens. From my coaching experience of over seven years, like all my coaching conversations. I wish to make this podcast episode very educational, inspirational, a bit of entertaining. Which is a challenge to me, but I am up for it and persuasive. Currently, to tell you what is ready, the concept, the theme, the format. Draft of the podcast artwork. Equipments, software, about twenty episodes of ideas. A few episodes recorded which is currently raw. Some idea of where to list is what I have as of now. I'm a slow learner as far as technology is concerned and I will take about sixty-five to seventy-five days to be ready. I have interacted with lot of podcasters. Until now, they have mentioned that initially you will dislike your voice. And you will feel that it may not be adequate. But I feel my voice is suited for a podcasting and I'll be able to make people learn. Or lean in, going forward, podcasting will going to be lot more easier, I'm sure. Project management is industry independent. So I look forward to many of you participating in my episodes. And I would also love to see you following Ace the Code when I launch it in December. This is the plan that I thought I'll share with you all. I now look forward for any feedback, suggestions and others from the audience members. Anybody wants to add on to the plan I have or wants to give me some tips? Where quality change can make a big.
Yeah, Nagesh, I wanted to ask something before I suggest something. So basically, what you are saying is that you want to create a podcast channel? Is that the crux of the plan in simple words?
Yes.
So, how do you plan to break the clutter? Like there is so much of podcasting going on, there is Clubhouse, there is, you know, but there are, there are tons of podcast channels. And how do you plan to break the clutter, number one? Number two is we all know that visual learning, you know, there are multiple types of learning. There are some visual learners, there are some auditory learners, there are some kinesthetic learners. Whatever you are targeting is more around auditory learning, right? So what about visual learners? Like I, for instance, I never listen to podcasts. So what's your plan for someone like me? How will it work?
Okay. So the niche area that I am targeting is for the construction project management professionals. That's why I said, having interacted with hundreds of them across continents. There is no one particular platform where their ideas and best practices or. Things that has worked for people are exchanged. There are a lot of groups that are around and people talk and exchange only reels. YouTube videos, something that is, you know, everybody has seen and keeps circulating. But nobody talks about the day-to-day affairs, day-to-day challenges. In project management, especially in construction. Construction in India, you might have seen, it has boomed a lot. However, if you do, if you rat hole into it, it's still primitive. We still have to struggle on lot of things. Project management has still not evolved in construction area. So I am, I am looking at targeting only construction project management professionals. Not those who already know things in different domains, one. Secondly, as it matures, you rightly said, you gave me an idea in fact. For those who are, who like visual treats. As I said, I may go. A panel show, a Q and A or a live session that I spoke about can be hosted on a visual platform. And then converted into an auditory media. You gave me an idea, I will work on that. Hey, no questions, no suggestions? You all know my number?
Yeah, I, hi Nagesh.
Yeah, Chetna, yes.
So, I was interested to listen to your speech today because when it came to podcast. I was curious to know what is that you are bringing in. So as during the speech you were telling about that you want to start with solo. And then you want to go with the interview and then again you told panel discussion. But as far as my experience, I think initially to start with. If it is any one mode that would be helpful, I think, to connect with the audience. Rather than mixing all the different types. So to start with solo, I think solo for a few days and then you get to know your audience. When audience when they start following you, then I think you can move the other modes is what I feel.
Thank you for that suggestion. I agree with you. I, I didn't say I will mix them up together immediately. I'll do a lot of experimentation and see what works. And then see what is the sweet spot and then probably work on that and take it forward. Thank you for that, Chetna. We are running out of time. Quickly issue if you have a question. We'll take it now or you can put it in the chat, we can take it offline. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'll put it in the chat, sir. I'll put it in the chat.
So much. I, I would love to see what you have to give me as a suggestion or a feedback. With that, I come to the end of what I had to present back to you, Toastmasters.
Thank you so much, distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh. A big round of applause for his speech. So to be honest, thank you for outlining the challenges and the role of acceptance and adaptability to the same. And I personally appreciate how you excel different roles by wearing different hats. That something stood out for me and yeah, looking forward for your educational, inspirational, entertaining. Yet empathetic podcast ahead. Thank you so much. Moving forward with our eighth speaker. She is a chirpy, happy-go-lucky bookworm who loves to eat, cook, travel, listen to music. And read about Indian mythology. She says that she has been fortunate enough to visit thirteen different countries and exploring new cultures. Currently, she is working as a senior technical writer for an M N C. Please join me to welcome Toastmaster Upashna Ghosh. She is attempting level one project two, writing a speech with purpose from the path team collaboration. The purpose of this project is to learn or review basic methods for writing a speech with a defined purpose. And to present a well-organized speech on any topic. Timer please note the speech length is five to seven minutes. Toastmaster Chetna, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Upashna. Toastmaster Chetna, yeah, I can see you there. Toastmaster Upashna. And life goes on. And life goes on, Toastmaster Upashna.
Thank you. How many of you have failed in your life? Please raise your hand. I can see few hands raised. Of course, everybody has failed, not once, multiple times. Thank you for all your part of active participation. Good evening, everybody. Today, I am going to talk about failure, which is very negative, very self-doubt. And a very negative term and nobody wants to talk about it. Everybody wants to talk about their success. Failure, it's not been told much. But today I am here to talk about my failure in my engineering days. Let me go back to twenty-eighth May twenty twelve, my twelve standard board result. And just like Indian cinema, my board result was a dramatic. First, the C B S E board was not ready to upload the results and when it uploaded, it was one hour late. And when it was uploaded also, it was taking so much time that I almost thought I would faint. But eventually I got my results and I got ninety in my English. After third standard, I got nineteen after so many years. So it was like unimaginable thing. And in maths, I got thirty-nine. Thirty-three is the passing marks. I got thirty-nine, six marks above the passing level. And I told my parents I would do in, I would study English literature. My parents looked at me with a very shocking face. Are you sure? And what good does English literature even bring? Did you be a teacher? I was like, I have no issues. No. Please do engineering. Anyhow, I was naive. I enrolled myself into computer engineering. And if anybody of you engineer were here, you will know that first semester we learn everything. And those are all basics. And in second semester, we go for advanced. So it's first semester is basic chemistry, basic physics, basic maths. And second semester is advanced maths, advanced chemistry, advanced mechanical. I could not understand maths the moment symbols came into the line. Until alphabets, I was all okay. The moment symbols came, I was out. However, in my engineering, I could not understand differentiation, calculus, integration. It was, I was always blank. But anyhow, I cleared my maths paper and all the other four subjects. Come second semester, come second semester. And I failed my maths exam. I never failed in my, until now, until my twelve standard, I never failed. And this is the first time I am failing. I was bit shocked. But I was in euphoria because college life you have to enjoy. So I was in that. I got thirty-nine and my passing marks was forty. Me being overconfident, I thought let me not go to my teacher and ask for reevaluation. And I thought that I'll do better in my second paper. We had three attempts. So in second attempt, I'll do better. In second attempt also, I failed. And at least in first attempt, I got thirty-nine. This time I got thirty. I was spellbound by my own remarkable journey. But then again, out of my overconfidence, I thought I will give it again. And in this journey, I was in my third year. We have our own process, our university has our own process and until then I was in my third year. And my complete college life, people would look up to me because they thought that I was very bold. And I did not have stage fright and I would anchor and everything. Up until my third year, I saw my result maths again. And I failed beautifully. And this time I got twenty-three. I still remember my marks. So when I was driving from my home to the center. I thought as if now the earth please and I prayed that some accident should happen and I should die. Or else the earth should just open up and I should get inside or something should happen, some bad thing should happen. At least somebody will have pity on me. But as the moment I went inside my house, my mother just asked, did you pass? And tears filled my eyes. I just looked at her, looked up her and I nodded, saying no. And that's when the hell broke loose. My mother cried. My father was shocked. How could she, she not pass? Because he is also an engineer, he could not understand, he could not contemplate it. And it took me one year because we have one year gap and I got a year drop. So again, I had to repeat the third year. Eventually, that one year was bit messy, too much of humiliation, disappointment, self-doubt was there. But I managed. I sailed that boat. Again, when I, next year, June, session starts and I had to enter. Up until now, I was called by my first year and second year as Upashna ma'am. And I loved it. Honestly, I loved when they would call me ma'am. And now I have to study with them. They are my juniors. But I made my mind and I was going up with all my positive affirmation. I am bold, I am brave, I can do this. This is, this failure has taught me everything. And the moment I stepped, I climbed my staircase towards my class, I could not walk. As at my feet, somebody was pulling me or something. I could not even walk few steps. And everything become, became blank. But eventually, I went, I came towards the door. And I just looked up and said, ma'am, may I come in? Ma'am looked in utter shock. I went inside and I could feel all the forty pairs of eyes staring at me. I went inside and I could feel all the forty pairs of eyes staring at me. This Upasana man coming in our class. Will she be our classmate? People, I I could hear mocking, people were mocking at me, people were shocked, they were, and I could see pity in their eyes. And me being last bencher, every time, I was sitting in the first row. It was humiliating. But in this one year, it taught me how to be resilient, how to be possible. Failure taught me that no matter what happens, this is not the end of the world. This is just a journey. And if you ha- if you are in the down, success will come. And eventually, when I was in my final year, I was one of the top ones. So when I go back to my story, I feel that whatever has happened, has happened for good and it has taught me how to become and how to strive for more. That's all. Thank you. Back to you, Tia Modi.
Thank you, Pasna. They say uh it's a phase and this too shall pass. So really hats off to your positive determination and the the sentence you said said that I failed beautifully. I never heard giving credit so much to failure. So I take that and I'm gonna use it in my next speech. So that's really great to see how you face the challenges at the same time manage to face everyone, the surrounding the situation and literally you know, stood out with flying colors. So once again, please put your hands together for Toastmaster Upasna's speech. Okay, last but not the least, here comes our ninth speaker of the day. She is a software developer at Cognizant Bangalore. She hails from the steel city of India, Mokarao, Jharkhand. Her hobbies are traveling and clicking lots of Instagrammable photos. Please join me to welcome Toastmaster Mamta Singh. She's attempting level five project two, prepare to speak professionally from the path presentation mastery. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice developing and presenting a longer speech. Timer please note the speech length is eighteen to twenty-two minutes. Toastmaster Chitrakshi, you will be evaluating Toastmaster Mamta. Uh Toastmaster Chitrakshi, are you there?
Yes, very much here.
Thank you for the confirmation. Toastmaster Mamta. Unlocking the magic, how front-end technology works. Unlocking the magic, how front-end technology works, Toastmaster Mamta.
In the era of digitalization today, almost all the businesses are online. And if there is no, if any business is not there online, then that is the loss of revenue for that business, right? In our daily life, we have used almost everything like apps, uh Swiggy, Zomato, Ola, Uber. Just clicking on certain buttons on your phone, food comes at your doorstep. Clicking, clicking on certain button, medicine, grocery, clothes from Amazon and Flipkart and whatnot, everything is online. But have you ever thought how it happens? How just I'm sitting at my home, clicking on cer- certain buttons on my phone and somebody came at my doorstep telling my delivery. Have you ever thought what happens behind the picture? How how this technology works? How that technology is bringing food at your doorstep? Today, I'm going to tell you how it works. That is the uh front-end development, back-end development and lot and lot of other stuff. Please do not worry. I'm going to to explain all those details in a very technical way. I'm going to explain in a very, very easy language so anyone can understand. I understand that my my au- my audience is not from the technical background. So if I I can ensure you that. Now coming to first part, coming to the front end, how front end works. When you visit the website, what you see, what you first see on your screen? You see like header, footer. Now here at the moment, I want to share my screen. Host, can you please allow me to share my screen?
It's enabled now.
Anyone, please confirm if you can see my screen.
We can see your screen.
Okay, thank you for confirming. You can, you, what you see here, you see the website of Indian Post Office, right? You see each and every tags here, elements like sign-in is there. If I go and write something like this. You can see here, hello Toastmasters is coming, right? Earlier, it was the sign-in. That is the HTML. Whatever the content you are seeing in just the alphabet letters, those are the HTML. Now coming to the CSS. CSS is styling. Uh it gives the styling to the web uh in any website or apps. Like you can see the color, you can see the font, you can see the font size, font with all those stuffs. You might have visited any website that is very beautiful and very pretty, very appealing to your eyes. But you have also seen any website that is very dull and boring, right? So CSS is behind the picture and how this CSS work there in IT, there is the UX team, which is the u- user uh experience team. Uh which design all those websites, which which I can say which does the drawing of all those websites. And which they call the wireframe and handover to the UI developer and UI developer build all those application and website. You all have done in their, in your childhood or or also in the present time that if you want to do any painting or if you want to draw any mehndi on our, on our hand, then what we do? We go to Google, search any mehndi, latest mehndi design, any painting and just by looking at all those things, we draw. Right? We draw those mehndi on our, on our hand. So it, it same happens with the UI also. The UX team does the designing of each and everything, coloring and all those stuff and handover to a UI developer. And UI developer creates all those things in the real life uh on those website. I can give you one more example of how important this CSS and styling is. There is a app called Phone Pay and there is a app called Google Pay. Right? You all have used now nowadays, these, these products have become an integral part of our life. We daily, we, we scan and send money to the shopkeeper. So Phone Pay and Google Pay both are used to send money, but people use Phone Pay. Why? Because the user interface of Phone Pay is more appealing compared to Google. That's, that's the reason uh Phone Pay ha- is having the higher market size. Despite the fact that Google is from a ju- Google Pay is from the giant name Google, Go- Google. Uh Google Pay's father is the Google, but, but people are attracted towards Phone Pay. It's like the intuition driven. If you open the Phone Pay, you will see like, oh, I can see one lens icon here. If I go and type something and click on this lens icon, means it will come something. It will search something, it will give, it will search and give me some data. So it's intuition driven. So this, all those stuffs happen by the UX team. And UX team does all the research on, on the thinking idea, which we call the design thinking. Design thinking of the customer, the users, we are the users and design and handover to the UI developer. And UI developer creates all this thing. Next is the JavaScript. JavaScript, I can say the brain of any application. If you are visiting any website, there is a form, you are filling all those forms. Now what? Clicking on the submit button, that would be in the below, right? Which we do. So imagine if you're clicking on the button, who is telling that submit button that uh user is clicking submit button now, now deliver this thank you for submitting this form message? Who tells that submit button to do? That is the JavaScript. Means it is the action, it makes the application action driven. User is doing something, performing any action, clicking on something and something is changing and happening on the application or website. That is possible only through the JavaScript. Till now, uh any, any que- this is the story of the front end. Now I'm going to take you to the backend also. But any, until any question from the front end? All right. No, now let me take you to the story of the backend. So user is entering some data. Uh the data is going to the backend side through the API and backend team will uh uh communicate with a data center or database. Data center and database are like something where all your data is there. I can give you example, if you are opening the Gmail and login there, user ID and password, you can see lots of your emails, even like ten years ago, your email is coming. What, what is the meaning of that? All those email, emails are stored in your PC in the, in your ROM? No, that is not, all those data is not there in your PC. That is in the data center. That is in the server set, which is coming to you on your screen. So there is a middle man called backend, backend developer, which communicates between the frontend and all those data, data centers. Now you must be thinking like data center, database, API, what she is telling, these are like the technical terms, I'm not understanding, right? So uh I can show you that by the end of my speech, you will understand the entire picture of that. Uh data center is like uh uh we have the hard drive, we have the SSD. In, in our personal life, we have seen those SSD and hard drives, right? Similarly, like uh if, if we join hundreds and thousands and thousands of SSD and hard drives, there will be a data center. And Facebook i- is having the largest data center. All your pho- photos, videos, all are there stored in the Facebook's data center. Google is having the data center. So and the cost of maintaining those data centers, cost of running, maintaining, it, it, it comes at a like, that is very expensive. Because of that, only most of the uh companies are migrating to the cloud. Now here comes the cloud. You have understood frontend, backend, some data centers, uh API now coming to the uh cloud. What is cloud computing? So all those uh s- data, your, all those data are stored in the data centers, which is, which comes at a certain price, right? Cost of maintaining, cost of running, cost of putting a guard to maintain all those things and some, sometimes when, when the server is down. We have heard that Facebook server is down today and because of, just because for one hour Facebook server was down, Facebook lost such and such amount of insane money. We have, we have heard certain news, even Instagram server is down, WhatsApp server is down. So something, some malpractice happens at the server side, all where all your data are stored because of that only. The users like uh make some such kind of nonsense. So because of all these things, most of the people ha- have migrated, most of the companies have migrated their entire business through cloud computing. Cloud computing, we have, cloud we have used in our daily life. Google Photos, uh Gmail, all those, all are stored in the cl- cloud. Even for the Mac also, iCloud is there. For Microsoft, OneDrive is there. And Google, we all are, because most of our Android users, so we have used uh Go- Google Drive, Google Photos, all those. Same, it, it is at the personal level. And all those companies at the enterprise level also, they buy certain space on the cloud. They buy certain space on the clouds like uh from uh AWS provider, Amazon AWS provides such space on the cloud for those businesses. So and even cloud, Google Cloud also provide uh the space in the cloud for those businesses to migrate their data from data centers to cloud. So this is the picture of cloud. Now I uh you have understood entire, like it's the full stack development which we see. Front end, back end, uh data center, API, cloud computing, all those things. But how those are connected in our real life? I'm clicking, I'm clicking certain buttons on my phone and food is coming at my doorstep. How that food is coming? How it is related to such real things? Yes, it is related. Uh I can give you like uh one example of uh I, I showed you one website of Indian Post Office. So you go to the website of Indian Post Office, you do cer- certain things, you track your consignment with a consignment ID. You, you, wha- whatever means usually what you do in, in the physical post office, you do on the website of Indian Post Office. So how it happens? Maybe in the past, somebody from the Indian Post Office would have reached any IT company to develop the website. That hey, hey, hey company, please develop the website. I want to migrate my entire uh offline business to the online so that the people will visit, come at my website and do whatever what they do at the physical offline offices. So I can give you the example like uh Indian Post Office uh might have visited any IT company, for example, TCS. Hey TCS, I want to migrate my offline business to online business. Can you please make the website for me, please? And I, 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 I'll be uh, I'll be the client for you and you will be, I'm going to give you the contract. TCS will say, yes, yes, sure, I'll give you, I'll, I'll develop the website for you. I have the pool of resources. I have full stack developer, I have database developer, I have a frontend developer, I have Java backend developers. All those developers are sitting in the, on the bench. I will onboard all those developers and immediately uh start one, initiate one project named Indian Post Office. So it, it, it happens like that. The businesses come to these IT companies, uh TCS, Cognizant, InforCis, Capgemini, IBM. These businesses come to these companies, su- service providing companies and they provide the service of making all those app, a- application and website. So it happens like that. And uh most of the uh governmental things in India, like uh any government portal or any exam like CAT, IIT or, or need, all those things are developed by the TCS only. So it, it, this is what happens behind the picture. And this is how the Bangalore runs. This, the Silicon Valley of the country, this is how the Bangalore runs. This is how the development happens. Now and trust me people, these are like, it is a very hard work. It's, it's very easy to use the application uh clicking on certain buttons and a cab is coming, o- opening the, o- opening the mintra and cloth is coming. It's very easy, but behind the picture like lot of hard work, hard work is there like the sprint after sprint, the la- hundred and hundreds of sprint are there and part by part developers design all those stuffs. Now you must be wondering, okay, developers are doing certain kind of technical coding in their laptop. Uh and uh how, how those things are coming at my application, how those things are coming in my phone, how those things are coming in my uh computer screen. I'm just visiting a browser, I'm just visiting a link there and those things. How those HTML, CSS, JavaScript are coming on my screen? So that the process is called deployment. Means uh developer is de- developing the code, which is in the local host. After that, the deploy- deployment happens. The, it, it's like the promotion of the code from local to the dev. And from dev to the UAT. UAT is the user acceptance state test. Uh remember the story of uh Indian government and the TCS which I said? Uh at the end, when, when the application is developed, Indian government is not going to accept all those things. Indian going, Indian government is going to first test that I have given this contract to TCS. TCS developers have done something in two years, three years. Let me check what they are delivering, whether that is right or not. Whether that, that is really as per my business or not. So they, where they do such kind of testing, it's the UAT. User acceptance testing. And uh and when all the test cases are passed, when all the gateway checks are passed, everything is passed. At the end, the client will give a UAT sign-off and uh the application will go live. Application will go in the production. And once the application goes in the production, it's, it's there. It's, it's open for the normal people, it's open for the public. And uh you are able to see on your mobile apps. And a- after going live also, this, this projects run on so, in like in the form of support and development projects. Like you are using any website and you feel like uh server is down. ROG Satu app was there and we were not able to get the OTP from there. It was taking ten to fifteen minutes. So there would be somebody, there, there would be a project of support and maintenance, that, that team would be handling the everyday glitches uh and problems of the users. And they, they do the rectification and correction in their code. That such and such glitch, glitch is happening and they, they, they do the correction of that. This is how everything goes. From just looking at the design to giving the brain to deployment and everything, this is how the cycle of a software or any application happens. Thank you and I hope that you have understood like uh even not from the technical background, you have understood how these things work. Next time when you click any, any button on your phone and see like pizza is coming from the Domino's, just to remember my speech today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Mamta. Please put your hands together and you know, congratulate for a great speech. Toastmaster Mamta, I'm not a techie. Toastmaster Mamta, I'm not a techie person, but your expert opinion has certainly given me some food for thought. So next time, I do know what all words to pick, at least some to maybe flaunt a bit. Thank you so much once again for your speech today. Okay, what a power-packed delivery from all the nine speakers. It was truly breathtaking. With this, it comes to the end of our first section, the prepared speech section. Please note, there are no polls today for prepared speech as we had an icebreaker speech in the very beginning. So dear Toastmasters and guests. We know that any preparation, performance or learning is incomplete without evaluation. It's the evaluation which helps us to measure the progress, reform and enhance the outcome. So let's keep the momentum going and start with the second segment, the evaluation segment. To jog your memory, let me reiterate that the evaluators will get two to three minutes to complete the evaluation process. On that note, let me call our first evaluator. He's a chartered accountant working at EY. He says that his love for Bengali food is deeply rooted in his upbringing as he has spent many holidays at his Nani's place. He loves being experimental in the kitchen and he's a big time Liverpool fan who loves playing football and badminton. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Devashish Parmaar who will be evaluating Toastmaster Amit Motwani. Zoom Master, can you please uh spotlight both our evaluator and speaker here? Thank you so much Toastmaster Devashish, the stage is all yours.
Thank you TModis Malte for your lovely words. Uh a very congratulations to uh to speaker one uh Amit for completing your project one. And you have successfully uh completed your project, the purpose of your project. Uh the reason I am telling is that through your story, you are able to connect to the audience that who is Amit? A person from Wa- a boy from Varanasi who fought through all the odds and despite achieved. Uh despite despite achieved the success. Now I want to uh uh break my evaluation into two segments, one is uh recommendation and one is. Uh commendation. So coming to the uh commendation, uh there are three things which I want to highlight. First, you, your speech, your content of the speech was well-written. And the way you moved from, the the way you transitioned from one story to another and emphasizing. That you are, you are in, you are telling about story one or story two and story three. Was kind of very well connecting to the audience and they were keeping the audience engaged and highlighting that where, what you're talking about. We are not, you are not making the audience digress by emphasizing that you are into story one, story two and story three. And as there was a chronology in your speech, you were kind of looping back your story. Each story with the other, a- as example, when you said in your story to that. You had, you were not able to crack your CAT examination and how you used your hard work and uh. Your determinations which you did when you uh went from Hindi medium to English medium school. So you connected well that that hard work, you use the same strategy there. Second, you use the uh, you use rhetorical device in 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 your public, in in your speaking, like you use similarly. Uh for relating your story, relating the story of a bird phoenix with your story that how the bird. Uh rises from the ashes, you also this uh rose from all the difficulties each and every time you faced it. And the third thing, I like your humility because you you were humble enough to show your fear. And be vulnerable in the front of audience. I also like the fact that you wanted to. You wanted to make your weaknesses into strength when you said that you were, you you had fear in front of. Fear in front, fear of speaking in front of huge gatherings, right? And your hands and legs used to tremble, but now you want to make that weaknesses into your strength. So these are the three uh commendation coming to your uh coming to the uh recommendations. You could put some emotions uh emotions and vo- voice modulations in situations like when you were. Uh narrating something which you feel sad about that you were about to fail in your fourth grade. So you could bring some some sort of emotions uh in such kind of uh uh. Situations and also excitement and energy when you cracked your CAT examination in the second attempt and you got into the prestigious. Uh Gurgaon College of MBA Institution. So these are the only uh uh recommendations from my my side. Otherwise, your speech was well-crafted, well-delivered, the pace, content, everything was spot-on. And best of luck for your future speeches.
Thank you so much.
Uh Devashish for that. Sorry, I'm so sorry, Smriti.
No, no worries, please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, uh Devashish, for that, you know, wonderful commendation and recommendation, I've written those down. So I think hopefully I should be able to use the, you know, the recommendations which you said and hopefully it will help me. You know, become a better speaker. Thanks a lot.
Please give a big big round of applause to both our speaker and the evaluator. Thank you so much. It's time for our second evaluator. She is a senior data analyst, a certified image consultant and personal branding coach. And she is the vice president education of the Gabby's Toastmaster Club. Please put your hands together to welcome distinguished Toastmaster Nancy Goyal who is evaluating Toastmaster Tessie. Mister Mr. Toastmaster Nancy, the stage is all yours.
Thank you Toastmaster Smriti. When you become a leader, success is all about growing others. It's a quote by Jack Welch, but this is what I learned from Toastmaster Tessie's speech today. The purpose of her project was to identify her primary leadership style. And the purpose of this speech was to help us understand whether she understood that primary leadership style or not. So when it comes to the purpose of this project and the speech, I could very well figure out from the entire speech that her primary leadership style. Is altruistic leadership style as well as a combination of altruistic and affiliated leadership style. And she shared a couple of instances where she has mentioned those traits of these two leadership styles and. How it impacted others' lives. So when it comes to the purpose of this project and speech, she has met the objectives very well. Coming to the content and delivery of the speech, I would say. When it comes to delivery, Tessie, your micro-expressions are amazing. The way you express every word, I'm still trying to figure out how is it possible? I'm sure you would have practiced a lot in front of mirror, looking at your own face. That is very well seen, that is very well apparent through your speeches, the way you express yourself. So that's a job well done. When it comes to content, yes, you had couple of snippets from which we could figure out that. Uh you have been through that experience and how you have implemented those traits. So again. When it comes to content, this part was good. You started off your speech with a quote by Richard Branson. That's again captivating audience attention, the moment from the word go, I was just thinking, okay. This is, this seems like wordplay, but that came out as a quote and I was already attentive. So again, a job well done. Now coming to the recommendation part here. I felt that your conclusion was a bit rushing because you lost some time due to crowdsourcing. And when you, you, I know you have already planned crowdsourcing because you have mentioned it in the WhatsApp group previously. However, the question, if you were thinking of engaging audience, the question could have been simpler instead of asking everyone for their experience. It's a five to seven minute speech where you can't ask people for their experience, it will take a minute or two, which is typically. Twenty to twenty-five percent of your own time that you want to utilize as a speaker and that's what we saw that your conclusion was a bit rushed. Second thing I would say that you can frame your content a little better when, when I say better. You talked about empathy, adaptability, commitment to continuous improvement. I would have called it ace, adaptability, commitment to continuous improvement and empathy. And that would have stuck with the audience for a longer time. These are the two recommendations that I would say, that utilize your time, skip crowdsourcing and. Frame it a little better in a way that it st- stays with the audience. A rest of the recommendations I'll share with you in the evaluation form. I wish you all the best for your upcoming speeches. Over to you.
Thank you so much, the distinguished Toastmaster Nancy for this evaluation. Let's give a big round of applause to both our speaker and the evaluator. Moving ahead with our third evaluation. The evaluator, as a behavioral and leadership trainer, she found her ikigai through her job with the Akshay Patra Foundation. She facilitates training program across India that upskills and motivates the frontline workers of her organization. And to upskill herself, her only place is Toastmasters. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Lakshmi Sajata who will be evaluating Toastmaster Ishu Shukla. Toastmaster Lakshmi?
Yes. Thank you so much, uh the Toastmaster of the day. And to my target speaker, Toastmaster Ishu Shukla. First of all, let me congratulate you for that amazing speech and also for meeting the project guidelines. What were the project guidelines? The project guidelines was to uh talk about your leadership skill and how it has influenced or impacted. People around you and probably yourself. And I did see that in your speech. How did you meet the project objectives and how, when, why do I say that your speech was brilliant? One, the title of your speech caught my attention. When you said uh not so obvious, I was wondering, okay, now what is not so obvious about a leadership style? And then there you go, you talk about parenting and as you very rightly said, parenting is one of those. You know, probably the first place where you exhibit your leadership style. So excellent on choosing a topic like that. And connecting it so well to your um title. Coming to the next point that I really loved is your content. Your content had a bit of humor, it kind of related to the mass here to a certain extent, right? Because it was about parenting and about children, correct? And of course, the third thing that I absolutely liked were the quotes that you used, the words that you used about which. Uh I think we do not have a grammarian today, but if we had a grammarian today, he would have had a good list of good usage of grammar today that came from you. And of course, the next thing was your body language. Now sometimes we force the body language, but most of the times. I like, but with you today, I felt a good connect between body language and what you were speaking. And it looked very natural. Congratulations on all the excellent uh you know points that you were able to achieve today. Now coming to a few recommendations. And these recommendations come from a point of view because you already seem to be a good speaker. So now let's see how, what is it that we can think about slightly out of the box? One is uh probably bringing about a balance. So when I said you used excellent words, excellent content and all of that. Sometimes I feel when we use too many of these flamboyant words or uh big statements. People might lose connect. Especially depending upon where you are or which kind of group you are. So if you could get a balance of that. And probably a little balance on the body language as well, that would help. Again, these are just small recommendations, okay? Uh the second point is. See, the these projects that you are attempting now is common across all the paths, right? Uh humor has this, uh visionary communication has this and your project which is persuasive influence also has the same project. So what can you do to relate your content or your speech to your pro- uh path? Which is persuasive influence, right? How can you make it sound different from somebody who is doing a uh presentation mastery project but attempting the same project? So probably what you can do is to persuade, you could have concluded with a question or with a proper pause and.
I guess it was a technical glitch. We can wait for a few seconds. Okay, she is here.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm back. The line got cut. Is it okay? Can I go ahead or is? Um is it done, is it?
You can just continue.
Yeah, I'm just concluding now. So Toastmaster issue, what I was just trying to say is when you talk about persuasive influence, how could you persuade? Ask that question, that one strong question that would make people think. So the way you concluded was about what you were planning to do or what you are. Here, your idea should have been to persuade people to think from another perspective, right? So with that, I would say excellent speech, great going, all the best, waiting to hear more speeches from you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you Toastmaster Lakshmi for that insightful evaluation for our speaker. Please give a huge round of applause for both our speaker and the evaluator. Now let me introduce our fourth evaluator. She is working in Course Five Intelligence Analytics Company, having six years experience. By passion, she's a health coach and a nutrition advisor, helping people in weight management and lifestyle issues re- uh reversals. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Jyoti who will be evaluating Toastmaster Sri Lakshmi. Zoom Master, can you please uh spotlight both the speakers and the evaluator? Evaluator Toastmaster Jyoti?
Yeah.
Yes, I found it.
Okay.
Shall I, yeah. Sri Lakshmi, what an amazing transformation from an under-confident girl to a confident girl. Today, what we see is that Sri Lakshmi who is not afraid to talk in front of the crowd. In fact, she's transforming many lives. What I loved in your speech was. You have shared your personal story, how how you joined IBS and transformed yourself with the help of your mentors. And later you joined Toastmasters and improved communication skills and leadership skills, which is so relatable. Uh because the uh one of my uh objective was to to join Toastmasters was to improve my communication skills. And I could totally relate to your story. You have explained different communication styles through your own story, which explains the purpose of the speech. You were so confident, your hand gestures were clear, you maintained good eye contact. And you have smoothly delivered your speech without feeling nervous. We didn't we, I personally didn't feel that. Uh you were not confident, uh as I don't know how how you were in your twenties, but I really didn't feel that. So you have came so far. Uh I would like to tell you some areas of improvement where it will help you to elevate your speech, speeches in the future. So you started your speech with, today I will be sharing a story. Uh instead of that, maybe you could have started with an interesting line or a quote to catch the attention of the audience. Maybe you could have asked a question, uh uh for example, uh. Any one of you felt un- under-confident and then you joined Toastmasters and transformed yourself, for example, like that, any question? A speech looks interesting, the second point, a speech looks interesting when it has a mixture of all the ingredients like. Pace, pitch, pause, expressions, gestures. So you have used some of them in the right mixture. But I felt you could have used some vocal variety because I uh I observed throughout your speech, you maintained the same pitch. For example, at one point you mentioned. For example, at one point you mentioned, you love to be around people. You could have said in this week, I love to be around people. I enjoy their company, like that. So you uh you have ended your speech with a good message which was so inspiring and overall to summarize, um awesome speech. Your story is so inspiring and I could relate to your story. Uh just work on the vocal variety of pitch and that's it. All the best for your future speeches. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Jyoti. I truly loved your evaluation and our speaker as well. Thank you so much. Please put your hands together for both our speaker and the evaluator. Okay then, time for our fifth evaluation. Our evaluator, she is currently pursuing a bachelor's in political science and economics. She says, the real reason behind this degree is because she loves to talk. Alongside, she loves dancing and she is frequent participant in her college fest. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Devyani who will be evaluating Toastmaster Sanjay Jain.
Thank you, thank you so much, Toastmaster Sriti. To uh is Toastmaster Sanjay here? Is he spotlighted?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hello, Toastmaster Sanjay. Uh today you really took us through a journey of a remarkable event. You started off very strong telling us about the planning and implementation that went into the installation ceremony that you were heading and you told us the intricate details that went through it. I absolutely commend you for your speech construction. When I say that, it means I really liked the way it was uh written with very, very good use of language. You know, your uh you use phrases such as um uh our journey commenced. Turning uh turning this into a reality would require diligent planning, exercise execution. Upscaling the venue to some to Gandhi Bhavan and etcetera like that, just very good use of language there. Um coming to the recommendations, Toastmaster Sanjay, this is your story. You know what happened, you know what's the best, you witnessed it and felt every motion firsthand. So you already know it, right? Just try to tell it to us in your own way. Other than having just a few points to remember, maybe just a flow of events, everything else you already know it. Right? So that's where I feel like the art of storytelling comes in. It's like you just have to talk to the audience, like you're conversing with us. Especially in lines when you said, um uh we were very apprehensive and doubtful about the weather conditions and that's where someone suggested Gandhi Bhavan. Or another example I remember was, just as the wind start, just as the wind started. Uh just as, sorry, sorry, uh just as the event started, I was in charge of guest list and I'm so proud to say that it went on well and it was a very exec- well executed task. So something like this, right? You don't, you don't have to necessarily uh use very a big, big phrases that you're not, maybe not comfortable with. It's your story. You just have to tell it to us like you're making a con- another conversation with us. And another thing, uh again with connecting the audiences, eye contact, right? Just, it's, it's a very small thing, but I feel like it makes a lot of big difference. When you look at someone, you tell them your story. You make them feel like you're part of it. And that also really grabs the audience's attention. Well, all in all, congratulations on successfully planning and implementing your installation ceremony. Your choice of words, places, they are so commendable. Just try working on giving speeches like where you're telling a story in your own words. You already know that have, you already know the flow of events, you know everything. So you just have to tell it like you're conversing with someone. And just make sure you have some sort of eye contact with the audience. I loved hearing you today. All the best for your future endeavors.
Uh thank you, thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Devyani for highlighting the minute small details uh which will definitely help the speaker and all of us to work on our workup points, I may say. Thank you so much. Let's put a hand together for both our evaluator and the speaker. Okay, the sixth evaluator in the row. She is a content writer and a passionate reader, an introvert who finds joy in conversations. She immerses herself in diverse music genre and languages. While her free evenings are spent treasure hunting in vintage book and stationery stores. Hailing from Mumbai, she cherishes the sunrises and sunsets at Marine Drive. Please put your hands together to welcome Toastmaster Jawan Jhosef who will be evaluating Toastmaster Monica. Over to you.
Hi, uh I can't see Toastmaster Monica, she's not spotlighted, I feel, or is she not in the room?
Uh she is.
No, no, I am here.
Hi, hi Monica. Thank you. The timer, you may not start time. Hi, so hustler and a learner, Monica, you spoke about your PR mission, you spoke about your newsletter. And it was very relatable, honestly. You chose a very good audience, that's the Toastmasters audience to bring in this idea and congratulations to you for that. As far as the project objective is concerned, let me tell you first and foremost, you nailed it, it's done and dusted. If it was really a good idea and a good topic that you choose. So that's the first thing I like, the topic that you choose and the idea that you choose. What are the second thing I like? The language and the way you speak. You are a very confident and eloquent speaker. As a public speaker, eloquence is something that you know comes maybe on the fifth or sixth level of skill, but you already have that. Naturally, maybe it's your skill, it's your talent that you possess and I like the way you speak. And the third thing is the vocabulary. You used words like unbeheath, pesto, kicked in my teeth and I stopped writing. I was like, okay, the speech is eloquent and filled with vocabulary that is not used on a daily basis. So that was fantastic, the way you scripted the speech. Now it was a good speech, how to make it extraordinary, a couple of tips from my side. So the first thing I was thinking about was structure, right? Such a beautiful, relatable idea. But what happens, Monica, is this is an idea that you have lived. It's your newsletter, is your, it's your baby, you have lived the process of developing it, right? But the audience has not lived it. So what happens is if you don't structure your speech from start to end, there is a lot of confusion going on in my mind that what is happening at what point of time. I'll give you an example. You don't know what a butterfly is, okay? You have never seen a butterfly. I show you a picture where there's a butterfly, there's a caterpillar and a cocoon. Now imagine I ask you relate them. You have no idea. Will you ever in your imagination relate a caterpillar to a butterfly? The beautiful butterfly. It's not possible unless you know exactly how the caterpillar turns into a cocoon and then a butterfly. That is the power of structure. Even if you have the most beautiful butterfly-like idea, that idea needs to hit the audience and that's why you need a structure. And then how, how do you structure a speech like the one you gave? I was thinking. And then you get to answer yourself. In the last couple of minutes, you said four points for the uh you know, when you want to think about PR. One, set your objective. Two, conduct situation analysis. Three, select your PR targets. And four, create a content plan. I said, see, she has a structure. You already have the structure. All you have to do is take the point number one and relate your newsletter story to that point number one. How did you do it? Take point number two, like for example, conduct situation analysis. How did you conduct situation analysis for your newsletter? Point number four, create a content plan. How did you create the content plan, review and control and monitor your newsletter? That's it. That would have been a beautiful structure. So I will always remember that four points and Monica's newsletter. So structure is the first recommendation. Second, what I was thinking was humor. Now I know humor is very subjective. Some people are like humor is not my style. But in your speech, you already had humor. You said pool of sharks, piranhas and I was like, why not use a funny voice to make people realize that, okay, there is some kind of humor already in the speech. You used the same rule for pool of sharks and piranha. You could have said, and then I was thinking about these people and they were like oceans of sharks or piranhas. That adds a punch. The audience has taken a back, they'll be like, okay, wait, something humorous came in. Right? You had a lot of area for humor. So overall, I loved your speech. I loved the content. The idea was very relatable, very eloquent and you know, high-level speaker you are. So I have high expectations for you. Next time when you write a speech, please think about the structure. You already know it, just think about putting it in the right way. Think about humor. And last half, like a half dose is your title. Like, but title need to relate, the title was not relating to the content. But overall, I have high expectations from you, Monica. Come back and give the speech again. All the best and back to you, Kiyomori.
Thank you, thank you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Jawan, for those insightful learning which we will, I had made a note. And let me also implement the same in my further speeches. Please give a huge round of applause for both our evaluator and the speaker today. Let me introduce our seventh evaluator. He is the VPPR of both the Gabby's Toastmaster Club and the Gabby's Online Toastmaster Club. He's a distinguished Toastmaster who has achieved two distinguished Toastmasters Award, three triple crown and completed eight paths. Please put your hands together to welcome distinguished Toastmaster Sorav Datta who will be evaluating distinguished Toastmaster Nagish Ramamurti.
Thank you so much. Am I audible? Is my voice okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. DTM Nagish, first couple of things I really loved about your uh plan that you shared. One is that about uh the focus, right? I mean, you were very clear that this is for the construction workers, for people in the construction industry. A very industry-specific initiative and that is what stands it out, right? So it's more like a cookie cutter kind of a thing and which is what I really loved about your plan. Now, a couple of recommendations that I would have for you because this is a high-level project. So first of all, the entire, the the way you handle the entire project. So I've just took a confirmation from the VP Education and the timer. You have the owners to describe to the people who are showing you the time, right? That in terms of how the time has to be showed, if you look at the project objectives. It's five to seven minutes of speech followed by five to ten minutes of a disruption or where we ask questions, throw, you know, poke holes in the plan. Now, the entire structure, the way it was done is ten to seventeen minutes of the entire project, right? So you hardly had any time left at the end. For people to disrupt your plan, tell you that this will not work, that will not work. And that's why you have barely had uh two, two interruptions or two questions or two feedback. If you look at the project objective, it very clearly says there has to be a minimum of three and a maximum of five. That time was not there for the very simple reason that we did not distribute it. So ideally, the way the timing should have been shown is five to seven minutes of the speech and ten to fifteen minutes for this particular discussion on whether the aspects of the speech are right or wrong. Now, coming to the the plan that you shared. What could have been done better there? I felt that the entire buildup was a way too long. This could have definitely been shortened down to something where I get to understand the plan very clearly. And that's why I asked you the question that, so the crux of your plan is to create a podcast channel. You spend more time in doing a buildup and creating that excitement of why it is necessary. What is the background? What is the perspective, right? I would want you to think if you could have approached it differently, where you could have given a shorter background and spent more time in explaining the nuances of the plan. Like the questions, like I said, like there are visual learners, there are auditory learners, there are kinesthetic learners. Particularly people in the construction industry, I would believe that probably, given the nature of their work, they would probably be more of kinesthetic learners. Which mean that that is something that you need to factor in in your plan. Because how much of patience would people have who literally work on the ground? So these are some of the aspects of the project, two major aspects of the project, which I feel uh has to be handled better. And my recommendation would be that if you can consider uh redoing this particular project based on this guidelines that you divided. Instruct the timer very clearly that five to ten minutes you have to show me exclusively for those interventions or the, you know, any questions and feedback that you may have. And then also uh add more around the plan and less around the background. Thank you. Uh back to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you so much, distinguished Toastmaster Sorav for those insightful evaluations. So let the ball get rolling with our eighth evaluator. She is a loving mother, passionate podcaster and avid student of human behavior and psychology. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Chetna who will be evaluating Toastmaster Opasna. Zoom Master, can we have our evaluator spotlighted as well?
May I request everyone to go on, uh come on video. I cannot spotlight unless they are on video. Now I see Chetna, thank you.
Toastmaster Chetna, stage is all yours.
Uh thank you, Sriti. Uh Opasna, congratulations for completing the speech. The first thing which I li- loved about your speech was the uh you, you initially you just grabbed the attention by ca- or or audience's attention by asking question. And you were quite confident while speaking throughout the speech, that is one thing. And you used a lot of, I mean, two, three phrases which was very uh which was very ca- catchy. Among one, among them which I remember is, uh I failed beautifully. So I think that was the thing uh which I also take away as Sriti was telling. So today that is also one takeaway for me. And your topic was very relatable to the audience. I think when you asked about failure, like everybody could relate and they could connect with, okay, what was that one failure which they went through? And you are an excellent narrator. Because you were able to tell about the each incident, stage by stage, when you fail, when you got good marks. And when you were not able to score good, but you rejected and you moved from the thirty-eight to thirty to twenty-three. The different stages, you would explain very, uh I mean, you, the narration was good enough. So uh definitely the things which I would want you to work on is mainly on the transitions. So transitions plays a very important role in any speeches. So as you told, when you asked the question, uh how many of you failed? So before they could answer, I think few of them answered, you just already move to the next uh thing, right? Similarly, once you've told good evening, Toast, uh Toastmasters. Post that you were telling something about failure and immediately when you told that I will be telling you a story. So the transition may, because transitions makes your speeches very stronger. So definitely I would want you to work on that part. And uh second is your pace of your speech. So uh I felt that uh you were rushing a bit when you were speaking. So that is one. And uh third is the emotions. Uh I would have loved your speech if there was a lot of, a little bit more emotions involved. Because when you were telling, uh when you were speaking about, when uh you face a lot of humility, self doubt. I couldn't feel those words. But the same thing at one incident, when you told that, when you went back home and you saw, you were crying and your mother were, I was filled with the tears. So that kind of emotion should be filmed. So with this, when you're telling, speaking about your failure, because this particular thing. So that is uh one thing and tonality that the voice modulation definitely uh try to include that in your speech. Uh coming to the uh project guidelines, as the guideline tells that you have to write a structured speech. Uh so, as I told you, transition definitely work on that part and uh conclusion could have been more powerful, though you, the phrases were very great. When you told the learning was, I learned how to be resilient and perseverance, but I couldn't get that. So it was like rushing. So but uh that part you can just definitely work. To summarize, it was definitely a very strong message. The purpose was very clearly defined because uh failure uh is what you wanted to emphasize. So all the best for the next uh speech. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Chetna for that judicious evaluation. Please give a big round of applause for both our evaluator and our speaker. The ninth evaluator of the day. She is a triple path breaker in nine months of a Toastmaster journey and secretary of the Gabby's Toastmaster Club. She has empowered over six thousand individuals to secure promotions, ace interviews and excel in their visual and vocal communication. Driven by her passion for making a meaningful impact, she aspires to possibly transfer the lives of a million individuals by the year twenty thirty-three. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Chitrapshi who will be evaluating Toastmaster Manta. Over to you.
Toastmaster Manta, prepare to speak professionally. An eighteen to twenty-two minute speech is not easy. You managed to give a speech as long as sixteen minutes and forty-eight seconds. This is, uh you had to prepare a speech and in this speech you had to practice and present a long speech. The question here is, did you do that? To answer those questions, here are a few things that I like. Being able to address the audience by saying, well, you're not all from a technical background. So no, I will not talk about technicalities. I will try to make it as easy as possible for you. Calling JavaScript the brain and UTA, user accepting testing and Calling JavaScript the brain and UTA, user accepting testing and things like that, putting things, those things in our mind to help us understand the project better and to understand how hard it is to be a software engineer. And it's not a joke. So something that we do on a daily basis from Zomato to Swiggy, it's not some, it's not something that happens just like that. There's a lot of hard work that goes behind it. The question here was whether this is what you were expected to do. As a level five project, you were expected to speak professionally. And when you speak professionally, there are two things that you need to keep in mind. One, who is your audience? And two, why should we listen to someone speak professionally for eighteen to twenty-two minutes? What is it that you're bringing to the table? Unfortunately for me, both these questions were left very unanswered. Even though I understood JavaScript and I understood UAT a little bit, uh, backend developer, I did get a few lines here and there, but I did not understand what was the relevance of it. And why did I need to know that? Why couldn't I just go back on Swiggy and Zomato and order something? Uh, what is the point of being a software developer there? Point number one. Point two, your purpose also says that you need to engage the audience. I did not see any sort of audience engagement here and I would have really liked, this is something that is something all of us do. Why couldn't you start with a question with, say, how many of you use Swiggy and Zomato? How many of you, uh, get a cab on Uber? And pick up your phones to see what is the first thing that comes on a website? Now with that, the audience would have been interested. When you ask, ask the question, what is the first thing you see on the website? Before you could give anyone a chance to answer, you said header and footer. So as far as I'm concerned, a header and footer is something you do on a presentation, on a PPT. And I'm, I'm an engineer as well. So I'm glad I'm not an engineer because today you told me how difficult it is to be an engineer. Keeping that in mind, as a level five project, when you have to speak professionally and eighteen minutes you have to engage your audience, you have to be more prepared with what they want instead of what you know. So you have to give your inputs based on what they can understand. And as your audience, I must say that this is something I would have truly liked to hear in easier words, something which was more relevant to me and something that could, that had a takeaway. So I would suggest doing a redo of this project because that will definitely help you prepare to speak professionally and tomorrow you'll be way more confident to give to, give the talks that you want to give with all sorts of audience, which is the reason we've all joined Toastmasters, right? So take a little chance here and do a redo with this project. Over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you, Toastmaster Chitrapshi, for that intuitive evaluation for our speaker. Please put your hands together for both our speaker and the evaluator. Now it's the bonus evaluation time. Our tenth evaluator of the day. She is the president of Gabby's Online Toastmasters Club. She is a finance professional working with Cardinal Health International India. A yoga practitioner and trainer loves traveling, trekking and playing badminton. Please join me to welcome Toastmaster Neha Jain, who will be evaluating me for my assigned project. Toastmaster Neha, stage is all yours.
Am I audible? Is visible?
There is an echo. If, I mean, I'm the only one who can hear it.
I can also hear the echo.
There is echo.
Okay, must be better now?
No.
Smriti, could you try muting yourself once? If she is the only one speaking, then it might work. Just try that.
Yep.
Is it better now?
Unfortunately, no.
Are you using?
I'm rejoining possibly.
Uh, remove your head. Are you using a headphone?
No, 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 I'm not.
Just log out, login then. It will just solve the problem.
Am I audible now? Am I audible now?
So now what you need to do is you need to go off audio from the other device. The device on which your camera, just leave audio from there and you'll be all good.
So should be fine now.
This is perfect.
Hear me very clearly now.
This is perfect.
All right. So if today's meeting was a delicious cake, Toastmaster Smriti was undoubtedly the cherry on top of that cake. You explained things so clearly. You set the expectations of each speaker and evaluator very clearly and eliminated any chance of ambiguity to ease the way for members and guests to enjoy the meeting today. You had great connectors in between each speeches, which shows that you were indeed actively listening. Toastmaster Smriti, your camera presence, your poise and your voice was so welcoming and comforting. Not just your onstage presence, I did notice that you helped our VP Education in filling up roles. You helped the SAA's in sending evaluation resources to the respective evaluators, which I think is great in managing online meetings. All in all, the way you managed this meeting was indeed impressive. But you know what? As a Toastmaster of the day, you speak more than anyone else at a meeting. And every utterance is an opportunity. An opportunity to infuse energy and enthusiasm. A lively and engaging teamord can set the tone for the rest of the meeting. Now you have a very captivating voice, right? A bit more practice on pacing could enhance your delivery even further. For instance, instead of saying, what a power-packed delivery from our nine speakers, it was truly breathtaking. You could infuse a little more energy and say, what a power-packed delivery from our nine speakers, it was truly breathtaking, right? And one other suggestion would be create a little more hype about the marathon on WhatsApp groups. Some teasers, some promos, et cetera, would have helped, would have, you know, intrigued the audience a little more. And you would have had a larger participation today, right? And my last suggestion, I know Gabby's is known for never finishing on time, but then as a teamord, your one I should always be on the agenda. All in all, Toastmaster Smriti, a wonderfully managed online meeting, it was very impressive that you, your onstage and offstage presence was thoroughly managed. Just work on your pace, delivery of your pace and time management and probably the WhatsApp app hype. Just these three suggestions and you're good to a, it's the next time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Neha, for all the insights. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Neha for her evaluation. Okay, so thank you for that. And with that, it brings us to the end of our evaluation section. Now, while we all were deeply invested in these amazing speeches on evaluation, there was someone who was doing a very critical task in keeping us on top. She is none other than our timer, Toastmaster Manvi. Toastmaster Manvi, could you please share your report and let us know if any evaluator is disqualified? Okay, with that, Zoom Master, the ball is on your court. Please launch the poll for the best evaluator. And I would request rest of the teammates to please cast the vote. In the meantime, do we have any guest or visiting Toastmaster today with us? Okay, in that case, would anyone would like to share his or her experience in joining the speech marathon today?
Sorry, Smriti. Could you please raise that poll again? I just saw, I was reading through the names and it just got lost. I didn't see my, my evaluator's name at all over there. I wanted to see her. Could you share it again?
Zoom Master, can you please answer that question?
Yeah, I will reshare it.
Okay.
Uh, the reason my name is not there, Tasya, because I went over time by two seconds. So it's anywhere not gonna be there. And yes, the poll went off. Karthik, please reshare the polls. Thank you.
Okay, meanwhile, if anyone would like to share his or her experience in joining the speech marathon today.
Well, I do have something to say, Smriti. Well done on your role as a teamord. Firstly, it's, it takes a lot of efforts to be there wherever you are. Point number two, I don't think I would want to sit anywhere else for so many hours. This is a great place to be. It's not just, yeah, you know, it's not just, you know, it's not just, you know, easy to listen to the speakers and also the evaluators. I think each one of us have contributed so much that there is so much to learn from each one of the roles and the speakers and the evaluators. So much vintage, so much happening, so much of experience. Oh my God, it's too much on a Thursday night. And I'm glad I sat through the entire meeting, not because I was one of the speakers. I could have dropped off, but the entertainment was throughout from the beginning till the end. And I think that's one of the reasons why Gabby's is what Gabby's is today. Well done. Kudos to each one of the role takers. Fabulous work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Tasya, for those kind words. Okay, now in interest of time, I can see seventy-eight participants in the polling board. Can we have more participants, please?
Uh, the polls are closed already. We can hand over and announce the results.
Okay, then. Fine. So any guesses, dear Toastmasters? Who is the winner of today's evaluation section? Any guesses? Devyani? Okay, keep it coming. Can we have another name or the same name?
Sorav. I think he had the toughest evaluation. Nancy, of course she's on the top, but she said she's not there in that list. For me, she's on the top. Yeah, yeah, definitely on the top.
Okay, since the polling, polling's are closed, so we have a tie between two Toastmasters. And they are none other than distinguished Toastmasters Sorav Datta and Toastmaster Chitrapshi. Please put your hands together to congratulate both our best evaluators for the day.
Now I know the reason, now I know how you win this.
Okay, please do let us know that recipe as well. So on that note, we end today's speech marathon and hope to see you all again this Saturday with another sensational Gabby's meeting. Uh, fellow Toastmasters and dear guests, if we have guest, I missed to mention one point in the very beginning that the guest can join Gabby's guest WhatsApp group, scanning the QR code on the Zoom background which we have now. So on that note, thank you everyone and a special thank from my end to all the role takers, especially the evaluators, who took on the role at the last minute. A sincere gratitude to all, each one of them. Thank you so much. Good night and take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.